Good afternoon and welcome to the April 21st, 2020 School Board Work Session. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed on the Henrico Schools webpage. Colleagues, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion or the agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is closed session. Do I have a motion? Um, excuse me, is closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters under items A1 and A7 of Section 2.2-3711, under the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific board employees, and consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation specifically regarding AC HIL versus Henrico County School Board, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now in closed session. Welcome back to the School Board Work Session. Colleagues, can I have a motion to certify closed session? Anybody?
I move that the school board certify by recorded note that, to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion, authorized in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Motion made by Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And closed session has been certified. For the next items, Dr. Cashwell will present.
Thank you, Chair Shea, members of the board. Good afternoon. For the first item, I am recommending that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion?
I move that the-- Go ahead, Ms. Atkins.
I move that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The administrative appointments have been approved.
Thank you. The board has just approved, effective July 1, Daryl Johnson, Principal at John Rolfe Middle School, and James Gordon, Principal at Glenly Elementary School. We look forward to introducing everyone to our new administrators. For the next item, we'll provide an overview of the previously approved fiscal year 2022, 2023 Annual Financial Plan, which has been approved by the Board of Supervisors and now includes additional funding for employee salary increases. And then, of course, at our meeting this evening, I'll be seeking your approval of that. So we'll provide a brief overview and answer any questions you may have. Mr. Wack?
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Again, this is just a brief summary of the changes to the fiscal year 2023 budget. It was adopted by the Board of Supervisors on April 12th and will be before you this evening, seeking for final approval with those additional funds from the county. So essentially, on February 24th, the school board did approve the fiscal year 2023 recommended budget with such initiatives as 40 new instructional assistants, we had 22 behavioral health positions, and career ladder funding. So all of those initiatives are included in what is before you this evening. On top of that, the Board of Supervisors has added $20.4 million, which will provide a 5% salary increase for our eligible employees. So $18.7 million of that is, has been added to the general fund and the other, across our other operating funds. So in total, our general fund budget is increasing by about $41.7 million, and that's made up of a $25.5 million increase in state revenues, as well as $16.2 million more in local funds. In summary, our general fund, as I mentioned, is increasing by 7.4% or $41.7 million. Our debt service budget associated with previously approved capital projects is increasing by 10% or about $4.5 million. The school nutrition budget's increasing about $1.5 million or 6.3%, and that's primarily due to changes in benefits, as well as the salary adjustments. And our state and federal grants budget is increasing by 9.9% or $7.6 million. And the majority of that is associated with recurring personnel costs from our SIR 2 and 3 grants for about $4.5 million, as well as salary increases for other eligible employees. So in total, our operating budget is going to be about $762.9 million or 78.8% more than the current year's adopted budget. And just have a couple of pie charts. And summarizing our general fund expenditures, we can see that the lion's share of our budget is dedicated to instruction at 76.1% in the new budget. And for our main revenue sources in the general fund, the state will be providing nearly 54% of our revenues at $324.6 million, with the other 46% coming from local funds and meals tax funds. Again, that's just the brief summary of what is before you this evening, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wack, as a reminder, this is a financial plan that we started reviewing back at the beginning of the year, and then we approved, and now it's coming back for us for adoption now that the Board of Supervisors have passed their budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to summarize that. So keeping that in mind, colleagues, do you have any questions? Okay, we'll start with Reverend Cooper.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So first, I just want to simply say I'm excited about the budget and the significant investment it will provide to our students, staff, and schools. Mr. Wack, in anticipation of receiving questions regarding the 5% raises, could you just review very briefly the timeline for actual receipt of the raises and who we're referring to when we say eligible employees will receive the salary increases?
Certainly. So the 5% raise is going to be a combination of a 2.68% wage increase and also a step increase of 2.372%. So for example, a full-time employee would be receiving that compounded or 5.06%. And that is going to be a large portion of our workforce. For our temporary and substitute workers, they will only be seeing the wage increase of the 2.6%. So all of our scales are moving up by the 2.6%, but the employees that are continuing next year will be seeing a step increase as well. In terms of when people actually see the money in their paychecks, that would depend whether you're a 10, 11, or 12-month employee. Our 12-month employees will see the increases in their mid-July, July 15th paychecks, our 11-month employees in August 15th paychecks, and our 10-month employees in September 15th at the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Consella.
Yes, I just have a few questions that have come forward since last we discussed the budget. Can you speak briefly to USDA and the impact to school nutrition services budget, please? I've had some constituents inquire about how we're going to be impacted, and if you could just speak briefly to that.
So the school nutrition budget, as I mentioned, is increasing slightly, and that has really been, especially in the current year, has been enhanced by additional federal revenues, receiving a more reimbursement per meal for our students. So that is providing enough funding that gives us the flexibility to cover the salary increases that are proposed, that will, those 5% increases for the eligible employees. And we've also received different allocations of state and federal funds to help with supply chain issues, so we have been able to, and focus on locally sourced and healthy foods.
Okay. Thank you for talking about the expenses associated potentially with food cost increases that we're seeing currently. I mean, that's kind of what my constituents were concerned about, was did our budget take all of that into account, which I assured them, but I wanted to ask you directly. And then, nextly, I wanted, this might go to Dr. Cashwell. If you could just elaborate on, when I look at the budget, and in our highlights, it says three additional employees for our multilingual learners and for folks throughout Henrico Schools, as well as myself. When I look at that, I know that we have more supports than just three. We have the supports that we need. But if you could just reassure folks who may be following this conversation, I would appreciate it.
So, yeah, in the general fund budget, we are seeing three new and additional English as a Second Language positions. On top of that, we are able to add, and these are new and additional positions from our SIR 2 and 3 set-aside funds, so we're going to have two more positions focused from those federal grant funds. And I believe also, perhaps within the general fund, we have, as we go through our recruitment cycle, we may be able to add another position by reallocating other vacant positions as we proceed through the year. So this is something we'll continue to reassess as a priority for the organization.
Okay, thank you. I just received some questions and feedback relating to, are we supporting all of our students? And we certainly are, especially our multilingual students and our staff members. And then lastly, I know that Henrico likes to lead the way in terms of pay raises, compensation, and since we've already dealt with longevity and compression pay, do we still lead the region in pay?
For this fiscal year, and so we know that other localities are just coming forward with proposed budgets, and until those are adopted and official, it'd be hard to do a hard and fast comparison, but we're always monitoring that to ensure that we are leading. So I think, you know, it's premature to say, given we don't have adopted budgets around the region to examine and do a fair comparison to.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Ogborne?
I really don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Atkins? Thank you. And I have, I have one that's come forth. I know some of our employees are very excited about the elimination of county tuition coming forth to our employees, and so they wanted to know, first of all, is that still in the budget?
Yes.
Which is yes. And second of all, does that require any policy change or any other vote on our part to waive that tuition? They want to know kind of, when does it become official?
When they apply, and I, feel free to jump in, and I think Dr. Tigan can cover this one if I miss any details, but it certainly, as this budget is approved by the board, that is what's proposed here. Of course, you'll recall, this board did approve a policy previously that allows for students to attend, this, I'm going to say this wrong, the staff in the county to bring students who reside outside of the county, who are their own students. And now we've added that it would be without tuition, and that we'd consider that on an annual basis. So when they apply for the variance, they'll, if they are approved, it'll be clear that there is no tuition for this year. And then, of course, just as they'd apply every year, should there eventually be tuition, that would be addressed at the time. So they'll know upon application. Did I cover that?
But--
Okay.
The current policies for kindergarten through the 5th grade.
That's right. K through 5. Mm-hmm. See, I did miss something. Please add on. Come forward.
They have already submitted applications, so as their acceptances go out, we'll make sure that it's clear that there is no tuition for this year, based on your actions tonight.
Has that deadline expired?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, colleagues? All right. Hearing none?
Can I clarify--
Yes.
--that if we hire new employees, they are still eligible to submit requests that their child come here to Henrico if they live outside Henrico? So I don't want new hires to think that they can't join in this adventure with us.
Kind of like an open enrollment window of sorts.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much. All right.
All right. So thanks for the questions related to the financial plan. As I said, we'll be bringing that forward for your approval at our monthly meeting this evening. For the next item, I have a brief update related to our COVID-19 health and safety.
Good afternoon, Chair Shea, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I will be providing a short COVID-19 health and safety update this afternoon. Today's agenda includes a review of the current COVID community level, an update on clinic practices, and a reminder of the symptoms of COVID-19 versus those of allergies, of those seasonal allergies so many of our folks are experiencing right now. So starting with the community level. As a reminder, this chart shows the interrelationship of the three metrics that are currently being used to determine community level. And while the number of new cases has risen slightly over the last three weeks, the number of new hospital admissions due to COVID, and the percentage of staffed hospital beds with COVID patients has decreased. And as of this past Saturday, April 16th, Henrico continues to be at the low community level. According to the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts, the small uptick in new cases is attributed to the new BA2 variant. So what does this mean when a child is sick? As promised at the last school board meeting, clinic practices were revisited at Monday's Health Committee meeting. Based on a combined, a continued recommendation from the committee, and approval of the leadership team, the testing requirements when students present with COVID-like symptoms will be eliminated. So beginning on Monday, April 25th, students who have no known exposure to COVID-19, someone who's tested positive, then they, and they have been fever-free for 24 hours without fever-reducing medication, and their symptoms are improving, they may return to school. But I want to ensure that everyone understands that the COVID take-home kits will still be available in the clinics and offered to families should they want to test their students at home. And furthermore, Henrico County Public Schools continues to participate in the Test to Stay Program, and take-home kits are available for those who are known exposures and if they are, and they're unvaccinated. So I want to make sure that people understand that while we're reverting to our, some of our previous practices, we're still offering those mitigation strategies as well. And as we think about COVID-like symptoms, and because allergy season is well upon us, this chart provided by the CDC was shared with both our school nurses and our families through the binder about three weeks ago. And unlike COVID-19, seasonal allergies are not caused by a virus. Seasonal allergies are immune system responses triggered by exposure to allergens such as seasonal tree or grass pollen. COVID-19 and seasonal allergies cause many of the same signs and symptoms. However, there are some differences that are shown on this chart. So if families are in doubt as to whether a student has allergies or COVID-19, they may request a test kit from their school clinic. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Tigan. Colleagues, do you have any questions? Any? No questions for you today, Dr. Tigan. Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Tigan. For the next two items, actually, we have items related to updates on progress of Destination 2025, our strategic plan, and Dr. Hinton is coming forward. She'll provide an update of a recent Steering Committee meeting and progress there, and then the next update we'll have from staff is related to our community partnerships' goal progress. So, Dr. Hinton, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, we'd like to give you an update on the progress of our strategic plan, Destination 2025. This is a timeline that was shared with you earlier in the year, and as you'll note for March, we conducted a meeting with our Strategic Plan Steering Committee. So today, we'll highlight the feedback received from that group, and later this afternoon, you'll receive a highlight of our community partnership work. The Strategic Plan Steering Committee includes 22 members representing each Magisterial District. They are a diverse group, representing a wide range of stakeholders, including students, school-based staff, central office staff, members of the leadership team, and school board representatives. Ms. Shea, Ms. Consella, thank you for your service on this committee. You have been actively involved with this group, and we appreciate your time and dedication to the work. The committee meeting was held on March 18th, and during the meeting, division leaders presented small groups with updates on each of the strategic goals. They shared progress on the implementation drivers and the work underway. The committee was divided into six small groups and were able to participate in the discussion on each goal through a round robin format. At the conclusion of the goal overview, committee members provided feedback for consideration as we plan our next steps. And at this time, I'd like to highlight some of the feedback received. For our first goal of academic excellence, the group praised the progress around changes made to the gifted identification process and academic and career planning. Based on the program audit in 2020, the local gifted plan has been updated to include multiple equitable-driven actions, including the addition of new screening and identification tools. To support academic and career planning, the HCPS Planning Guide has been transitioned to a fully digital resource, and students in grades 4 through 12 are now using Major Clarity, a student-driven, online college and career readiness platform to gauge career interest and to facilitate exploration. Several areas that were mentioned for further consideration as strategic plan drivers are being implemented, including the need to define and communicate the division's literacy goals as part of the literacy plan, and to expedite a plan to support math instruction similar to the support being provided for literacy. In alignment with our current implementation drivers, the committee shared that ongoing professional learning is needed to help support the instructional model, to ensure that all teachers have a clear understanding as to what instructional design, delivery, and assessment looks like in the classroom. Towards our driver to meet school accreditation goals, the committee encouraged us to continue exploration of alternative pathways towards meeting graduation requirements, specifically with our incoming high school English learner students. And lastly, the need to increase family awareness of academic processes was discussed. Through our family engagement team, the division continues to inform and educate families on a variety of processes through bridge builders and other school-family partnership Feedback on our goal to provide an inclusive, safe, and supportive climate praised the division for providing additional resources to support social and emotional learning. Specifically, the committee appreciated the use of a systemic SEO curriculum selected for each school level, and the development of alternative approaches for implementing positive behavior interventions and supports. Moving forward, the committee supports the proposed budget that includes additional school-based mental health providers, and would like to see additional positions in future budgets to reduce the school counselor-student ratio. The committee also encouraged the continued professional learning of staff in restorative practices and trauma-informed care. At this time, over 400 HCPS employees have received training in restorative practices, and opportunities continue to be offered. Lastly, the committee suggested that the division continue to seek alternative learning placements for students to provide individualized targeted support. The intended shift in elementary programming at the Academy of Virginia Randolph is designed to provide positive intentional support to pre-K through grade 5 students, who would benefit from non-traditional education experiences. As appropriate, students would engage in curriculum-aligned learning that incorporates project-based and/or activities associated with career clusters. As you heard in their February update, the Departments of Human Resources and Professional Learning continue to prioritize the recruitment and retention of staff. The Steering Committee praised their efforts to support staff wellness through calendar flexibility this school year from banked inclement weather days. The committee also supported the work around the career ladders and micro-credentiaing opportunities. For additional consideration, they suggested that we explore potential financial incentives. Some ideas included differential pay structures based on school quality tier, incentives for employee recruitment referrals, and other regional living incentives. In support of the staff wellness plan, the committee suggested seeking additional mental health resources for staff that would provide immediate support for employees. Staff currently have access to the Employee Assistance Program. However, it takes time for the employee to access this support, and interim support may be beneficial to staff in crisis. Later this afternoon, you'll hear more about our efforts to inform, engage, and support families. The committee recognized these engagement efforts and were complimentary of the family advocates, bridge builders, and the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. Several of them also commented on ways to expand these programs to additional schools. One committee member stated, "The community hub at the Old Highland Springs High School is outstanding. It's an amazing way to use this building space in a wise way that supports students and their families. I look forward to hearing more about this opportunity for families as it develops." The committee was also excited to learn about the Career Ambassador Program, and suggested for the school division to increase awareness and expansion of this program. Career ambassadors are seniors from the Advanced Career Education Centers, and they share career pathway information and experiences from their CTE programs to prospective elementary and middle school students through career days, classroom visits, as well as district-wide events. Feedback was also given to consider additional resources for supporting school connections with our English learner families, such as expanding the Family Advocate Program to schools with high English learner populations, regardless of the school's Title I designation. The Equity and Opportunity Department has led our progress towards our goal to leverage our strength through diversity and lead dialogue to ensure equity and access for all. The committee praised the inclusion of an African-American history course in high schools. This is the first year that each of our high schools has offered this course to students. Additionally, the Equity Ambassador Program continues to be a successful model for including students in dialogue around school culture, equity, and inclusion. The committee encouraged the division to leverage the ambassadors as mentors for younger students. In support of our staff, the committee suggests providing additional professional learning of culturally responsive instruction and creating school cultures that support student being, well, being, sorry, belonging. These suggestions also support our goals of academic excellence and providing an inclusive, safe, and supportive climate. Lastly, the suggestion was made to consider ways to measure the impact of the division's equity and diversity work. Some progress has been made in this area, as we have implemented the use of equity indices when analyzing and discussing other metrics. Additionally, the survey items on our Henrico surveys specifically align with strategic plan and include items around our cornerstone of equity and opportunity. As we strive to provide equitable and secure learning environments, the committee praised the many staff members who keep our schools, offices, and buses running each day. We all appreciate the commitment of our school nutrition, transportation, and facilities teams, and understand their importance in helping our students to be ready for learning each day. Recognizing their value, the committee stressed the importance in including these staff members in the division's recruitment and retention efforts. The committee also commended the school division's relationship with the county public safety offices, and suggested those partnerships be highlighted in the community. The HCPS Office of Safety and Security models safety procedures from best practices used across the country. These efforts will continue as practices and procedures change in response to nationwide school safety issues. We appreciate the thoughtful work of our strategic planning committee, and would like to thank them for their continued support each year. They offer a variety of perspectives and input that help make our strategic plan successful and relevant. Their feedback will be used by division leaders to refine and develop new strategies as we continue to work to meet our goals. Following our timeline in June, we'll provide an overview of the results from our Henrico surveys conducted in March, which are a key metric to measuring progress on many of our goals. Lastly, in response to this input, we look forward to updating the board and the community to share more detailed information about how we are responding to our-- to share more detailed information about how we are responding to our community's feedback and the next steps in implementing the strategic plan drivers. And we are very excited to share that the new Destination 2025 website that we previewed for the board in January is launching today, and it's already actually out. Our communication team has created a user-friendly site for our community to receive updates on the progress of our plan and our metrics. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton. Any questions? All right, I'm going to start with Reverend Cooper.
Again, thank you, Dr. Hinton, for this very informative presentation. Thank you for that. Quick question, can you go to Slide 5? So from Slide 5 during the March meeting, what was some of the specific feedback that the committee provided regarding alternate routes to graduation, alternative, and in ways to increase family awareness of academic processes?
So one of the ways in terms of the alternate routes to graduation, they talked about some of our students needing to have employment and also wanting to get their high school diploma. So looking at, you know, evening courses, expanding those offerings, and being creative in how we are able to accommodate our students with, you know, getting that coursework that they needed. In terms of family awareness, one of the things they talked about was we could go in and videotape some of the courses. So we could go in and videotape perhaps the CTE course and use a portion of that in our course planning process so that instead of just reading a course description, a family member could go in and actually see what a course looks like in that area. So those were just some of the examples they provided.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella.
Yes, it's amazing. I think having served on the committee, I want to say since February, March of 2018, I was most struck by how many of the items that even since we've updated it since then still needed to be updated, even amidst the pandemic, and it felt like we were in crisis mode for so long. It was amazing to me how much work the division actually did to move us forward at the same time. So hats off to everyone throughout Henrico County Public Schools, wherever you are, for helping us move forward. And I know at the very end, you said highlighting the work, you know, out with the strategic plan. I really would like to see us somehow highlight and share some of that, just like I enjoyed seeing, you know, music, right, for the 23rd year in a row. You know, we're excelling with music in our schools. I think that that's, that we've done all these things during a pandemic was just amazing to me. But to share feedback, in follow-up to what Reverend Cooper said, I also heard some thoughts on adult alternative education paths or alternative paths to graduation, with constituents advocating that these be clearly communicated in as many languages as possible, which that's not the first time the board has said this, and I know it's a focus of ours, but I wanted to make sure that was conveyed. And then, secondly, more mental health resources for staff and more support for students with counselors. I mean, this current, you know, our proposed budget has a lot of counselor support in it for our students, especially at the elementary level, but I think the secondary is also a place where we need to focus. And then, just seeing the recruit retaining reward feedback is tremendous. I mean, I know that that was, those discussions during our meetings were very verbose with lots of great feedback, so it's nice that it summarized, some of it summarized there. And that's all I had at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Augmiron?
I want to just, just real quick, the focus on ESL and family advocates, I think that is something we really need, and I, so I appreciate that. But I also appreciate the format that you shared this. What was receiving praise? What are we doing well? How can we improve? I think that's a, which is very helpful, reading it, and I want to thank Ms. Consella and Ms. Shea for serving on this committee because I know this is, it's a heavy lift, and I appreciate that. But just the format that you presented is very digestible, and that's what we want the strategic plan to be. We don't want it to gather dust in the corner. I'm glad to see we have the website coming up and that Dr. Cashwell is looking at it right now. And I mean, I think that is, it's user-friendly, and being able to look at this, the public is now has access to this. It gives us a way to look at what we're doing well, and I agree with Ms. Consella, we need to highlight some of those things even more. But how we can improve, it shows we're trying to at all times, which we obviously can. So anyway, thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you, ladies.
Thanks, Ms. Augmiron. Ms. Stevens?
So congratulations on launching the website. That's a pretty big deal. So congratulations to you and your entire team because I know it's a team effort. I also want to thank my colleagues, Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Consella, and everyone that participated in this effort. I just know that the path becomes clearer when we listen, and I see some of that listening in what you presented today, and I'm very grateful for seeing that and taking feedback, truly listening to it, and then transitioning it into a space, as Ms. Augmiron said, that you can present it in a way that's digestible. And that also comes from listening to all of those different pieces and being able to put them all together and present them like this. So thank you for that. I did have a question also around exploring alternate, alternative routes to graduation. Were there any discussion in the special education space on how to obtain a diploma? Because I know, you know, we have varying IQs and varying results on test-taking that sometimes may prohibit an individual from moving forward in that direction. Were there any discussions on any route for, in that special education space, to obtain a diploma?
I didn't see any of that in the feedback that was shared from the group conversations, and like I said, I was in every, in every group for every discussion. But as some things that definitely we can follow up with our special education team on and how to get that information out to families so that they are aware of those pathways.
And I just want to also align with that, that question, that I do know that that's a much bigger conversation. It's a state conversation, it's a federal conversation. But I think it might be wise to start to tap into that conversation as we're beginning to have alternative route conversations, making sure that whether there's legislation that eventually over time may or may not pass, but this may be a ripe time to engage in that conversation. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. I just want to, you know, I have been involved in this, Ms. Consell's been involved in this process even longer than I have. Before, before she came on the board, she was a parent representative. I was involved in some of the small groups before, and it's been that were kind of the little seeds that blossomed into the strategic plan, gosh, three, four years ago. And so it's been really neat to see how this has evolved and how it has truly taken a broad range of stakeholder input. And even since I've been, we've been on the board the last two years, to see how it has transformed from a lot of ed speak to something that's much more digestible. And I know that was feedback specifically from our, some of our students who were, who were in our groups talking with us, and they said, you know, in this conversation, what we're talking about makes a lot of sense, but when I read this document, this is like a foreign language, you know, because we had implementation, you know, this and that. And then, as we've merged some of those goals together that worked, it makes, we, it's, it seems to be a living document, right, and it continues to evolve, and I think that's so important. I, some board members from other local divisions that I've developed relationships with and we, you know, trade information, they are just floored that we have a strategic plan that is truly driving our division. And I've shared our old website, so they will be so floored with our new website and, you know, just how you can, you can dive deep or you can just, you know, understand kind of the broad sense. And so I just want to thank the superintendent and the whole team for making this a priority and making this clear as to what our goals are in Henrico and accessible to our public. I think it's super important. So that's all I had. Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Hinton.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing with Destination 2025 progress updates, really excited. We, as promised, we had an April Community Partnerships progress update for you, and certainly, community partnerships are a division-wide focus, but for today's update, you're going to hear from our Family and Community Engagement Team, as well as our Workforce and Career Development Team on some specific progress related to goals in this arena. So it looks like Adrian's going to kick us off, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Shea, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm Adrian Cole Johnson, Chief of Family and Community Engagement, and today, we will be sharing community partnership goal updates for Destination 2025, our division's strategic plan. Across areas of safety and wellness, academic growth, equity and opportunity, and of course, relationships, our strategic plan cornerstones are steeped in our ability to collaborate with internal and external partners. The goal of cultivating and maintaining meaningful relationships for student enrichment are opportunity touchpoints found throughout our work in HCPS. I'd be remiss if I did not share that this month is also Global Volunteer, sorry, Global Volunteer Month, celebrating the power of people who tackle society's challenges and build stronger, more vibrant communities through volunteerism and everyday actions. Whether discussing large corporations such as Meta, Altria, or Capital One, or some of the local nonprofits and enterprises that you will hear more about today, Henrico truly exemplifies community when it is time to support our students. So volunteers, partners, and Henrico community, thank you for all that you do. Our village is stronger because of it. Specific to today's update, this afternoon, we're sharing insights from Family and Community Engagement as we are redefining the foundation of our partnership approaches as a, as a district while also weaving collaborative partnerships throughout our programmatic efforts. We will also hear from our friends and colleagues in workforce and career development, national leaders on what building effective partnerships looks like. Considering how vast and diverse our county is, it has been important that we streamline a process that works for our unique efforts. Within FACE, we often look at school-based and community-based, I'm sorry. Within FACE, we often look at school-based and community-based as a means to identify the types of impact we seek to maintain. It's important to note that our objectives to support students through family, community, and school partnerships are alive and active in several ways. Our school-based partnerships show up via the work of our family advocates, as they are encouraged to manage at least three to five partnerships in their schools. We also have engagement impact committees that bring together staff, parents, community, and sometimes students in some of our secondary schools. Our community-based partnerships show up via our district-wide engagement efforts such as bridge builders workshops and sessions, and our numerous collaborative committees that span various agencies and departments in Henrico. Our goal is to model the process of collective impact while prioritizing family and community voice within the school system. I'd like to introduce our Community Partnerships and Resource Coordinator, Virginia Hanson. While housed in the Office of Family and Community Engagement, we have scaled this position as a division-wide support for guiding an impact-based approach for school-community-based partnerships. She will provide details on our unique partnership approach and framework.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Chair Shea, school board members, and Dr. Cashwell. As introduced by Chief Adrian, I am Virginia Hanson, the Community Engagement Coordinator for Partnerships and Resources. In keeping with the Family and Community Engagement commitment to students and families, we have outlined an effective partnership strategy to guide our approach. Genuine reciprocal and intentional connections are the characteristics that move partnerships from good to great. As we build upon this model, we are also beginning to learn what indicators to consider when evaluating the success of our collaborations, thus leading us to explore the best way to collect and manage data. Family advocates and other designated school personnel were encouraged to connect with prospective businesses, faith-based groups, and community organizations, and communicate terms for collaboration or a partnership that supported their school quality and/or PBIS goals. These impact goals are then outlined on our partnership agreement form, allowing space for reciprocal planning and a shared vision for our school communities. The form and the details of this process is live on our website and have also been disseminated to school communities for completion. Once both parties have completed the agreement, the partnership form is submitted to me, where it is then recorded in our community partnership records. Our goal is not only to provide a uniform process for schools, but also retain information in a centralized way, with the expectation of learning across sites and throughout the district. While there are several active and successful collaborations in motion, I'd like to highlight a couple here. John Roth Middle School has partnered with Amber Lancaster and Start1 Spark to provide personal sports equipment and cover instrument rental fees, club dues, and other costs associated with extracurricular activities. Because of this partnership, many students and families are relieved of their financial worries that come with being an athlete, to date a partnership valued at $15,000. Across the county, faith-based leaders and their congregations have tapped into the needs of our area schools and donated school supplies, additional food support, and various items to support school stores and incentive programs. For example, Ridge Elementary has partnered with Wellborn Methodist United Church, and Wilder Middle School has established an ongoing partnership with Anointed New Life Church. Also, in an effort to stay more connected with our faith leaders, HCPS hosts a biannual gathering to listen, learn, and share as a larger community. As you can see in the video, as you would have saw in the video, this winter, HCPS partnered with the newly-formed Henrico Community Food Bank with a mission to provide access to nutritious food in an equitable and dignified manner to those in need. The Food Bank identified HCPS as an anchor collaborator in hosting their first food drive and distribution, with targeted support for Henrico students and families during the winter break. While this partnership was led by the Family and Community Engagement Office, it was an opportunity for all school communities to provide deeper support to families that were, that our food's insecure. In just three weeks, we identified 200-plus HCPS families in need before the winter break, and we were able to meet the demand through resource sharing. Collecting 6,160 pounds of food from Henrico County citizens and partners, it allowed us to support and serve 420 unique individuals. Factoring in 88 volunteers, there is an estimated partnership value of $6,250. This partnership will remain intact, as Henrico County Food Bank is providing a community-based layer of nutritional support to our students and families. In response to the discontinued federal and state aid for food support, on March 30th, our office partnered with workforce, with workforce and the Virginia Lions Club to organize a spring distribution in preparation for our district-wide spring break. 204 boxes of food were prepared and distributed, and 185 gift cards were extended to families when the allotted number of boxes were no longer available. Approximately 500 families were impacted in the coming months, and we hope to increase our capacity to serve more families in Henrico. And now I will turn the presentation over to Mac Beeden as he highlights CTE approaches and updates regarding community partnerships. updates regarding community partnerships. Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell. You know, partnerships should be more than just a one-time ask. They have to grow. When you're thinking about the meaning of a partnership, you need to consider a couple of things. You need to consider the value, the outcomes, the goals, and what this partnership should look like. We always talk about the why of what we do. With partnerships, the same is true, but for both parties. Questions to ask when considering and talking about partnerships: Why would I want to invest in this relationship? And what do I hope to gain from this relationship? What is the real value of this partnership? What will be the outcomes of this partnership as it's developed over time? Is an effective partnership voice and choice, is that represented? Both are important. In an effective partnership, you have to keep in mind the answers to certain questions. Is it about the connection and the relationship that you and the partnership have together? A rule in CTE is that you don't just ask, but offer. Everyone likes to receive, then it's a whole lot easier to give. Are you involved in this relationship? Are committed to this relationship? How would you define the difference between the two? It's easy to write a check, but to be committed, it takes effort, and it's work and difficult, and you have to continue at this. What are the goals of a partnership? You can't just ask. True partnerships provide intrinsic and extrinsic rewards for both parties. The personal part of a partnership is crucial. What connects you with the partner? What connects parties to be willing to invest the time to grow this partnership? At this point in time, I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Beverly Cox, Specialist for Workforce and Career Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Cashwell. Such mutually beneficial partnerships play an essential role in creating opportunities for students to be successful in the future, often providing supports and resources to meet staff, student, and community needs that go beyond what is typically available through schools alone. Whether it is quality-based learning experiences, such as job shadowing, internships and externships, co-teaching that provide an in-the-field learning support, or career preparation activities like mock interviews, our community partners readily step up when the partnership is nurtured. By checking in and asking ways we can support them, we keep the partnership ongoing. For example, Dominion Energy is one of our sustainable partnerships that is ever-evolving based on student, business, and community needs. Just this school year, Dominion Energy provided elementary students at Longan with career exposure activities related to Virginia's 17th Career Cluster Energy. They participated... You got it?
Yeah, I'm trying to find where you hit.
Next one.
It's not there.
It's showing in our board docs presentation, the Dominion Energy slide. It just doesn't seem to be there. Rest assured, we can see it.
Okay. It's their logo and a couple of pictures of the event. Okay. They participated in both HCPS's Life Ready Expo and College and Career Night. They were a contributing sponsor of the Career Rodeo last month, and even set up a booth with hands-on activities for the middle school students who attended the event. The partnership between Dominion Energy and our department continues to further bloom as they approached us with a new opportunity for students by donating seeds and equipment for a pilot micro-farm at the Advanced Career Education Center at Hermitage. Here, students from the Greenhouse Management and Culinary Arts Programs will be able to learn firsthand from indoor farming, from seed, to harvest, to table. Now we're right. Community partnerships provide relevant, diverse, onsite and offsite K-12 career experiences that enhance authentic learning opportunities, whether it's through school career days or district-level events like the Life Ready Expo. Business partners play a vital role in students identifying their interests, talents, and work values, as well as gaining greater knowledge and understanding of career opportunities for the future. The Department of Workforce and Career Development hosts three major events in partnership with our business community. During the Life Ready Expo, students and their families explore career pathways and talk directly with businesses. Since its conception, hundreds of community partners have come together to make this a meaningful career exploration experience for thousands of students, grades seven through 12, and their families. Our first Life Ready Expo in 2019 brought together over 150 business partners and 4,000 attendees. In 2020, we pivoted to seven virtual mini-expos. And this past October, we were back in person hosting a modified Life Ready Expo, capping the event to 80 business partnerships with 2,000 in attendance. Last month, we welcomed the return of the Career Rodeo Skills Challenge. With the assistance of community partners like Richmond Raceway Complex, Hef, Dominion Energy, and RICO USA, we were able to host nearly 500 A-Center students who showcased their skills learned in the classroom in front of 250 business and community partners. During the event, 400 resumes were requested by potential employers in attendance. A designated place where businesses could talk with students on the spot was available. This year, we added a career exploration component by inviting each middle school to bring students out to the Career Rodeo, in order to witness firsthand our A-Center students in action and learn about career pathways. While waiting their turn to enter the rodeo, middle schoolers got to interact with businesses like Anton Parr, Dominion Energy, and the FBI of Richmond. As the middle school students explored, they were able to connect their interests with possibilities, planting career seeds along the way. And on May 24th, we will hold our fourth Letter of Intent Signing Day, where community partners join us in celebrating students entering the workforce, as they take the skills learned in their A-Center programs into the new careers. However, learning does not stop there, as training, apprenticeships, and college reimbursements are some of the employee benefits these grads will receive, along with a paycheck. Participating businesses are spotlighted as well during the ceremony. Henrico County received national acclaim for the program in 2018, which has since been replicated in 49 states and Canada. With the help of our community partners, we are changing the narrative for students going into the world of work upon graduation. Now I will turn the presentation back over to Mr. Beaton.
There are three main focal points for purposeful community partnerships and engagement. First, serving our staff by helping improve academic outcomes. Serving our students by providing opportunities. And serving our families by providing resources. Family and community involvement fosters partnerships among schools, family and community groups, and individuals. These partnerships result in sharing and maximizing resources. And they also help children and youth develop healthy behaviors and promote healthy families. Community partnerships offer communities the opportunities to support the needs of children and families with intentional, enhanced, and support academic, social, and emotional health experience in the school setting, as well as local agency and community-based sites. At this point in time, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, team. I'll start on this side this time. Any questions? All right, I'll start with Ms. Atkins.
Chairwoman Shay, I don't have questions, but I do have thoughts. I'm going to read what I wrote so that I can stay focused, because I'm a bit emotional, be with the information that you've shared. So I just want to say, this is a lovely example of taking in quality information, reading signals of change, and moving forward proactively to serve students, staff, and school communities. I'm taken by that small phrase, "We don't need handouts. We deserve hand-ups and handshakes." I love that. And so it kind of took me. So I want to just acknowledge that I did see that, and that means a lot, not just to me, but I can tell you to thousands more. I'm also a very proud School Board member, excited to share your work, wherever I am, as I represent this title. I'm a resident that's grateful for the many opportunities. So removing this School Board and just being a neighbor disimpacts me in that way, and so very grateful for that. And then, I also just want to say that because of your work, I am also a recipient of your goods and services. I'm a recipient of being able to go and grab a box of canned goods, because when you're hungry, your title doesn't matter. So I want you to understand the impact that teamwork has, and how community partnerships make a difference. And you and your teams personally have done that for me in those three ways that I've shared. And what's even better is that there are thousands of people, just like me and my family, that feel the same way. You make a difference, and the partnership, not only outside of your teams, but within your teams, is so clear. It's so loving to see, because we know we need a little bit more love. And I see it. I won't be religious in this moment, but I just need to know that I feel that vibe, and I feel it very strongly. And that when we can be examples of how we work together in partnership and truth, goodness comes. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Agburn?
Thank you. First of all, welcome back, Bev.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Pleasure seeing you, ma'am.
In person for a change, as opposed to just exchanging emails. But I want to just basically thank you for the work. I don't have questions either, but like Ms. Atkins, I will just make a couple of comments. The overwhelming thing that I heard you say so many times is support for students, support for kids, support for families, serving our families. Support and serve just kept coming up over and over again in what y'all were talking about, which I think is at the crux of what you do. It's got to be incredibly rewarding. It's incredibly rewarding to see it, but to do it, I can imagine, is incredible. But I just see it as a win-win for our partners and for our students, because I know, I've talked to some of our partners that have been at the Life Ready Expo or one thing or another, and you run into somebody, and they talk about the great things that this group is doing, and how they were able to connect with future employees, which is, that's the crux of the whole thing right there, is we want, we talk about wanting our kids to be life-ready. But then, when they do that, they achieve that, they get that industry certification, they go into a job, and then you hear later from an employee how pleased they are with the student that they found. You know, you know your work is being successful, and you've seen it for the kid. You probably don't hear from later. But that, to me, was just amazing, the first time that happened to me. But I just think that the partnership aspect of this is so vitally important, because we need to connect the school system with the community. It's just that partnership is so key, and the fact that y'all have done so much that you have to develop, I just think is so impressive. It is the key to our success. It helps our kids, and it achieves the goal that we want for all of our students. So for all of that, I'm really appreciative. And the fact that y'all are bringing the middle school kids in to the Life Ready, kudos for that. Getting them in there, letting them see what's coming, so they can do their course selections and have a taste of what's available later. I'd love to get fifth graders involved somehow. Wouldn't you love that? So they can see what they need to take in middle school, and then in high school, what's out there for them. But anyway, kudos. Thank y'all so much. And again, welcome back, Bev.
Thank you so much, Ms. Agburn. Ms. Kinsella?
Yeah, I think I'm going to be a little chatty versus asking questions as well. I totally support the partnerships, and it's the partnerships, whether it's supporting our students, families, anyone supporting our staff, because it's all about the students. So anyone involved in the partnership is just so valuable. And one of the comments I hear often from hanging out in the CTE world and a business advisory committee is how Mr. Beaton says, "He never asks folks for things." Folks just want to know how they can get involved and give, and what can they do? How can they help us? And I just think that's interesting, because a lot of folks would think that it would work differently, right? Is that you're out in the community asking for things. And I just think that's a, it's a great mindset that you have, and I think it's why a lot of our business partnerships are so successful. And I can't speak highly enough about the work Ms. Cox and Mr. Beaton have done, nor can I say enough about our FACE team. I mean, the work that you've done in our communities throughout the pandemic, and as we move forward, you've transformed, you're responsive to what's going on. And I don't mean responsive as in reactive, you're proactive in it. But there are so many needs, we didn't even know we had, and you've not only identified them with the help of our school leaders and our advocates, but we've met the needs, we continue to do so as we move forward. One of my questions is, how can we support you, all of you, in the partnership work? And then, how can we, it's my understanding, having attended the rodeo, that not all middle schools participated in this opportunity. So I would like to maybe hear about that offline, how we can get all middle school students access to the Career Rodeo, because it really was something else. And seeing the looks on the faces of the students, not just getting to read about a class online, they got to see it in person. And whether or not they were choosing that as a career, they may be interested in a class. I mean, we don't know, and the students don't know. And just that in-person event was just so powerful. So really, just thank you for the work you do. And any way we can support you, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Reverend Cooper?
Again, I just echo the sentiments of my peers in regards to the work that you all are doing collectively and collaboratively. Thank you again for that. Quick question from Slide 6. Could you briefly kind of share with us the review process for selecting the partnerships? And once a potential partner has submitted a partnership inquiry form, and any screening process that occurs for the purposes of safety and alignment with HCPS?
Great question. And so, what you see to the left when we talk about inquire is when the partnership, the partner will fill out the form. But we really work through these three Cs of connecting, communicating, and collaborating. And so, while the form is a sheet of paper, it's typically a meeting with the school where they're sitting down to talk about what their goals are, where they're headed towards as a community, so that the partner and the school community can really get on the same page about what the commitment will be. I think career and workforce do a great job of talking about sustainable, and we often say, high-impact partnerships. Within that process, there is a volunteer form that everyone fills out if they're working within the schools. So they still go through that process as well for safety.
I mean, thank you. That's so important, because it's not just you just show up and you just start working, but it's definitely an intentional process in place to ensure the alignment, plus the safety screening. So thank you so much for that. And the last question, you all have established many essential and strategic partnerships, and we've become familiar with many of them locally, as well as statewide and nationally. Our schools are diverse. Our students and staff represent so many countries across the globe. Our students and staff represent so many countries across the globe. And so do we have any international partnerships? And are we looking to expand our global footprint?
Well, actually, it's funny. We actually do. And I'm going to give an example of one of them that I think is very powerful. Anton Par, which is actually a Swedish company, was very excited at the way that we go about preparing young people for the workforce, because their education system is truly a dual prep program. While you're in high school, part of their goal is to prepare young people for a pathway right up front, so that when they leave high school, they already know the why. And they were truly impressed that the why was a piece of our conversation, as well as the understanding of the triple E's, enrolled, enlisted, or employed, which leads to the why. We have several other companies, such as Howney, which we've been partnering with for years, which is actually a German company, Train International, which is Ireland, I believe, is their headquarters. So yes, while a lot of companies have their, some offices here in the United States, their corporate offices are actually overseas.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I could wax poetic about both of your departments all day. And even though we're running ahead of schedule on the meeting, I will save us all. But you know, Ms. Cole Johnson, I think about when you came into this role, into your role, and you joined the division of a budding department. And then, you know, as, you know, that was only, that was primarily serving Title I needs, and how you have blossomed to the department to serve the whole county in so many facets. And you were thrown into COVID in 2020, shortly after you came on, and the way that you, you just didn't stop, right? And you just kept pushing, and you just kept filling those gaps, and how it has made tactile differences for our students in terms of their physical needs, but also pushing in with, that's my mom. All right. But tactile, meeting our families, and just all the social, emotional needs of our students and families. Thank you. Thank you for that. And I particularly took note of this process that came up here on Slide 6 that Reverend Cooper was talking about, and how responsive that is to the early August meeting we had with the Faith Partners. And we had so many people who wanted to partner with our schools, but they didn't really know how to go about it. They didn't really know how to find the best fit. And it was, well, talk to my department, talk to my department, which you've done a tremendous job, but to streamline that and have it in one place, and you know, with website revamp, making it more accessible, like, that's key. People who want to help being able to plug in. So thank you for being responsive and streamlining that. And I'm hoping we'll see many more fruitful, high-impact, sustainable partnerships from that. And then Mr. Bayton and Ms. Cox, you know, I have a heart for CTE. And Ms. Kinsella and I get to meet with the Business Advisory Council once a month and hear about, you know, not only from you, but straight from our community partners about things, and you know, how we're truly reaping the harvest of partnerships that have been cultivated for years. And like, the Richmond Raceway comes to mind, and how it started as a small partnership on one project, but the students were so responsive. And it wasn't a handout, it was a handshake, and it was a two-way street. That's grown so much on our opportunities for things like the Raceway graduations and using their space for our rodeo and all of those things, and as well as having vaccinations and having our architecture firm we work with come work with our CAD students. You know, that's not something that's manufactured, that's authentic, and that's organic, and it's because of sustainable relationships. And so I'll talk all day about how y'all are national leaders in that. But I just want to thank you for that, for really growing relationships that are not superficial, they're not for a photo op or a recognition or a feel-good charity moment. They're authentic investments that pay dividends for both our students and our community. And I think that's what it's all about. So thank you so much.
All right. And I will also thank our team for that comprehension. And you know, I think I teed this item up saying that, you know, this is a Destination 2025 update related to community partnerships, and that it just represents a fraction of the work being done as it aligns to our goals. And what an incredible presentation, tremendous work, and it does only represent, I think, just a fraction of the work that's being done by the team in front of us and so many others across the school division in our effort to truly support our families, students and the families in service of our community. So appreciate all you do. Thank you for this presentation. All right. The next item I have for you is an opportunity to receive an overview of our annual Special Education Plan, our flow-through 6B, Section 611 and 619, school age and preschool grant applications. So at our monthly meeting this evening, I'll be seeking your approval of those grant, the grant application, but want to provide you an overview here. And so Dr. Smith, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon and to present you with the Annual Plan for the Use of Special Education Federal Funds. As you know, each year, I'm required to present the Annual Plan for the Use of these federal funds. The presentation and full federal grant application was provided to CAC on April 12 for their review and feedback, and today I present the plan to you for your review and approval. Additionally, as part of the Title 6B grant, the full application will be made available to the public through Board Docs following this presentation. Special education services for students with disabilities are funded through three different funding streams. HCPS receives funds from the federal government in the form of the 6B grant, state funds, and local funds. As you can see on this slide, the majority of funding to support students with disabilities is provided through local funding sources. Approximately 53% of the money used to pay for special education services comes directly from local tax dollars, with state revenue accounting for approximately 30%. And only 17% of the funds that are allocated to support special education come from federal grant funds, which is a specific funding grant source that I'm here to address in this presentation. The 6B grant is provided in two separate allocations. The 611 funds are intended to support school-aged children. Since the state has not provided the allocations for the 2223 school year, the plan that we will provide to the Virginia Department of Education, and which we are outlining today, is based on level funding from the 2122 school year. The majority of grant funds we receive will be used to provide salary and benefits for 95 special education teachers and 52 instructional assistants. Additionally, 25 elementary department chair stipends are also paid out of the salary and benefits grant line. We do withhold a portion of federal grant funds to support contract services, specifically sign language interpreter and nursing services, as well as several funds to support independent educational evaluations. Additional funds are used to support coordinated, comprehensive, early intervening services. I know it's a mouthful, but I'll discuss that in detail in just a few minutes. Another small portion of funds are used to purchase materials and supplies, such as educational assessments or curriculum resources to support specially-designed instruction. These grant funds provide a large portion of our assistive technology devices and supports, which are required by many of our students. The other charges category you see on the screen reflects the administrative costs which are associated with the grant. Each year, our finance department receives a formula, which is provided by the state, which determines the amount of administrative costs which should be charged to the grant for reimbursement. The second portion of the grant is the Title 6B 619 funds. The 619 portion of the grant is specifically allocated to support students in our early childhood special education program. As with the school age grant, the majority of these funds are used to provide salary and benefits for early childhood special education personnel. However, only two of the 44 early childhood special education teachers can be funded through the grant. We allocate a small portion of the 6B 19 grant for materials and supplies to support early childhood special education programming. Comprehensive, coordinated, early intervening services and proportionate set aside are required set asides associated with the 6B grant. With CCEIS, school districts may either be required or volunteer to set aside 15% of their total 6B grant allocation. CCEIS requirements are based upon federal standards for disproportionality in either discipline or identification for students with disabilities. In Henrico, we have been determined to be disproportionate in our discipline. Our team continues to work with the disciplinary review hearing office and Division of School Leadership to address discipline disproportionality in our schools for students with disabilities. Funding for the next school year will be used to support a Bliss specialist and a Bliss coordinator to oversee our 18 Bliss programs. This was a recommendation from the independent evaluation completed by Merck shared this fall. The program evaluation found that Bliss programs help to decrease disciplinary incidents for students, has led to a decrease in private placements for students with emotional disabilities, and led to an increase in positive perceptions of school. The funding will also be used to support eight Bliss teachers and nine full-time Bliss instructional assistants. These positions support 17 schools within our division. Additional CCEIS funding will be used to support seven dean of students positions in our secondary schools, and provide funding for necessary staff professional learning around pro-social skill behaviors, self-regulation, and alternatives to suspension. PSA is an acronym which stands for proportionate set aside. All school districts are required to keep account of those students with disabilities who are parentally placed in private schools or who are homeschooled. School divisions are required to set aside funding based on a formula provided by the Virginia Department of Education for individualized service plans for those students who choose to access those services. These service plans can provide students with up to 36 hours per year of speech therapy, occupational therapy, or other related services. Pardon me. Additionally, up to four hours of educational consultation services can also be provided annually between the case manager and private school personnel or case manager and parent. Two additional requirements and elements of the 2223 Annual Plan include maintenance of effort and local and regional jails. Maintenance of effort requires school divisions to spend at least the same amount of local and state funds for the current school year on the delivery of special education services as was spent the previous year. As you can see, Henrico County will spend a combined amount of $12,536.56 on students with disabilities for the 2223 school year. Additionally, in July of 2021, Henrico renewed our MOU with the county sheriff to provide funding to support one special education teacher at the local jail. Thank you for your time and attention this afternoon as we discuss the plan for using the Title 6B federal grant funds. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this presentation and grant at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I know much of this is very technical and legally required for us, so we appreciate you being here. I think I started on that side this time. So Reverend Cooper?
Again, thank you so much, Dr. Smith, for this information. And I know, as Chairwoman Shay just alluded to, that it's necessary for us to present this legally. But I would implore our stakeholders to go online once we make available our application, because they can see on a micro level what you've presented on a macro level. As I read the application, I was excited to see that on your Slide 4, out of the 8.6 million for Personnel Services, would support the salary and benefits of 95 full-time special ed teaching positions, 52 full-time instructional assistants, and then one private day facilitator, et cetera. So that information is available, they can see our intentional effort to robustly increase the workforce. But then also, that 1.6 million proposed for the Comprehensive, Coordinated, Early Intervening Services.
Nice job.
CCEIS. I said it four times real fast before this meeting, would support the salary and benefits of a key personnel who worked directly to identify ways to reduce district discipline disproportionality for Black students who receive 10-plus days out of school suspension. So it speaks directly to our intentional efforts to continue to find ways to take the information that your department has accumulated, as well as the Holton Report showing that we're our way forward for our students with disabilities, our exceptional ed students are very important to us. So again, thank you for your department and for your leadership and stewardship. And again, hopefully, our constituents will read the application so they can see specifically what the allocation is. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Thanks so much, Ms. Kinsella.
Yes, I support exactly, I agree exactly with what Reverend Cooper just said about the level of detail. And we're not only required to see it, but we want to see it so that we know where the funds are going, and so that we're supporting all of our students to the best of our ability, right? I did notice that we have a meeting on April 26 at Tucker High School. Will this information be covered with stakeholders who choose to attend and learn more?
So it will not be shared. So it was shared on April 12, and it will be made publicly, and I certainly would take any feedback, additional stakeholder share, but that meeting on the 26 has a completely separate agenda topic.
But it is relevant to, it is relevant, though, is it a, I guess, what is the, what is going to be covered that night? Because I was thinking this was relevant to talk about how the money is spent with stakeholders, but if it's not...
And Ms. Kinsella, if you'd like, or Dr. Cashwell, I'll let you chime in. But that particular meeting happening next week, Tuesday, I believe at 6:00 PM, is particularly around providing an information session regarding the Special Education Advisory Committee, and sharing information on how the community can partner with Henrico County Public Schools in moving forward together. It'll also encompass information and resources, certainly can share more information, maybe on the table, or maybe through independent conversations about this information. But that meeting really is particularly centered around the community hoping to shape the future of the Special Education Advisory Committee. And Dr. Cashwell, I'll let you provide additional details.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great preview of the upcoming meeting. And to Dr. Smith's point, the proposed plan, as you're seeing it, was presented to CAC at their earlier April meeting, as were required to, so that it's teed up for your approval. One step is also that they see it, so that's why they saw it at the April meeting.
I was just thinking that stakeholders were coming.
Absolutely.
That would be shared with stakeholders, but that's not necessarily the topic.
Well, I think, and we continue to, I mean, to your point and to Reverend Cooper's point, you know, certainly for the approval process that we're seeking to get these funds, there are some benchmarks that have to be met by today's meeting, but that doesn't mean we don't continue to communicate ongoing and hear from our stakeholders related to how we're funding special education, not just through Title 6B, but through our general fund budget, and continuing to get stakeholder feedback on that. So certainly, point well taken. But for the specific grant, I think that's why that milestone was met at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Kinsella. Ms. Agburn?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Agburn. Ms. Atkins?
So thank you for the presentation. The only question I have, and you may not have an answer to this immediately, but perhaps it's something that proactively you might want to consider, is any legislation that might impact the allocations of the funding for 2223 and forthcoming? Because I don't know if it's Senate Bill 1303 or something like that. But maybe perhaps looking at some legislation that could impact particularly cost and funding for private services, et cetera. So as you continue to move forward and securing, and we certainly, as a school board, have certain other processes that we have to go through before things are finalized, but you may want to consider looking at legislation that could impact funding for the upcoming year around special education.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything? All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith. All right. The next two items I have are under operations, and they're related to two contracts that I'll be seeking your approval on at this evening's meeting, but want to offer an opportunity. I know the Board has received the documents and had an opportunity to look them over, but would provide an opportunity to see if you have any questions related to Item 7.01, the review of contract and authorizations for the execution of documents for acquisition of computer hardware, software, and services for middle school students and staff and central office staff laptops, which would be through an existing Commonwealth of Virginia VITA contract, which is Virginia number 190822. Any questions? Any questions? Also, an opportunity related to Item 7.02, review of the contract and authorization for the execution of documents for the acquisition of computer hardware, software, and services for elementary schools and related tax-exempt purchase financing through an existing Commonwealth of Virginia contract, number 190822. No questions on those items? That concludes any items I have for the Board.
And thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Board members, do you have any unfinished business? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda is new business. Board Member Stephanie, new business for our work session? Hearing none. The announcement of our next meeting date, so we obviously have the monthly meeting this evening, but our next meeting will be on a work session on Thursday, May 12, 2022, at 1:00 PM here in the New Bridge Auditorium. The meeting time may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned, and we will see you at 6:30.